With that, I'm gonna welcome everyone to the Town of Wakefield Board of Appeals meeting for Wednesday, June 12. I'm gonna remind everyone that the meeting is being recorded, be available for replay on the town's website within a few days. The start of the roll call of members, Chip Tuttle, I mean Chip Tarbell.
Here, deserved.
Dave Hatfield.
Here.
Joe Pride.
Here.
Mickey Feely.
Here.
Kirsten Brown.
Here.
Greg Demersian.
Here.
And I'm Tom Lucy, obviously, I am here. There is no new cases, so we don't have to read in. The call for the meeting. With that, we'll get right into it tonight. And I'm gonna call up other matters first before continued hearings. We have two other matters that should just take a minute or two, and we'll dispose of those, and then we'll move on. The first other matter on the agenda is 356 Lowell Street, Noria Minor Modification and Certificate of Occupancy. I thought I saw Mr. McGrail on the line. I believe he's the attorney for that.
I am. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the record, Attorney Brian McGrail, here on behalf of Nerea Energy. Pat McLaughlin is here with me, who is representative of Nerea. I don't think he'll need to participate, but I wanted him here, just in case there were any questions. I think you can see the construction has proceeded diligently and successfully on the project. The site looks terrific. We were out there last week with Mr. Tarbell as a representative of the board to do an inspection of the property in that we're seeking good correspondence from your board to the building inspector, to the effect that your conditions are satisfied and you don't have any issues with him from your perspective of issuing the certificate of occupancy. They'd like to open within the next week or two. So, we did have a site visit with Mr. Tarbell. Certainly, he will speak to that. We, there were a couple of issues that needed to be rectified on the plan to reflect what field changes took place out there, which I believe are minor and can be approved as such by your board. One of them, we actually added trees where one was called for. We added three, we added four, we put four instead of one, I should say. And then another dealt with the handicap ramp coming off of Lowell Street near the Dahlbyer School. Because of the topography in that area, we needed to make some field changes on that. So, what I, what I have is I have a new revised site plan dated 6/12/24 and a landscape plan dated 6/12/24. They're both reflect those changes. And I'd like to work off of the landscape plan, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chair, because it really.
Yeah, please.
Landscaping. So, I'm gonna just share my screen in that regard. And then I can kinda highlight them, and certainly Mr. Tarbell can elaborate. Okay. So, the first change is, there was originally one tree that was specked on, to orient the board, this is the Vernon Street side here. Down here is the Lowell Street side. The Dahlbyer School is over here. This faces the parking lot for the Dahlbyer School or the drainage detention area. There was one tree that was specked, and Mr. Tarbell noticed when we were out there, they actually planted four. So, there was one that was specked down here, and they added three more for a total of four. So, that was one change. The other change deals with the handicap ramp over here. Because of the topography, what they had to do is they had to extend this retaining wall a little bit. And this, it was originally gonna, gonna be kind of like a slight slope, but it didn't turn out to be that way. So, what they did initially when Mr. Tarbell was out there, they installed some riprap rock here to stabilize it, just for construction purposes. And when Chip was there, we talked about the fact that instead of having that, we would do a landscape retaining wall that kind of is incorporated into the ramp. The freestanding sign is in this area. There's some lilies that will be planted here. There'll be now a planting area. And then they're proposing seasonal plantings depending on the season in this area near the sign that would about the school. And as you can see, they have a, and this is reflected more on the site plan, which has the matching date. They're proposing a wooden guardrail along, just along, along this area and around. Just so people kinda don't cut through, and because this is a little bit of a wall, they don't want anyone to fall off of it. It's probably only gonna be about two or three feet high. Is that probably right, Chip, from your view out there on the?
Yeah, I, just a real quick. So, the slope is much steeper on that hillside than they thought it was going to be. So, we talked about, you know, kids and a guardrail and so that they can't, and the rocks would just be a an added nuisance for children, because they were just about softball size. So, their idea of adding a wall with a guardrail on top of it is great. That also gives them the ability to plant up there, which they were supposed to do as well. But as far as I'm concerned, they met all the ZBA qualifications except for seasonal planting so far. And, but that should be coming now. So, I'm fine with issuing a note to Ben that they've met all our requirements. It's come out nice. If you've gone around that corner, once they put the seasonal color in, it will be great. But even now, it's, it's such an improvement. The stone wall, the planting in front, all of it's been good.
And there's two issues that, that there's a lighting issue. If you recall, there was a condition on lighting to temp the, the intensity of the lighting from 11:00 AM to 4:00 AM. That once they open, we wanna go out with designated board member or board members. All the lights are on dimmers, and we have to come to an agreement what those light levels will be at nighttime. So, the dimmers are installed. It just is gonna entail a site visit once they get open for the board to determine what the proper level is during those hours of the late night into the morning. And then.
And they're gonna need to play a little bit with that at the beginning as well to see how low they think they can get it and still be safe.
And then one final thing that comes after, after occupancy and operation is there's also a condition that the board might recall of a follow-up sound study for the equipment that we're gonna do. And then if, if there's issues, make adjustments to that. So, that's gonna be a follow-up sound study within 60 days after they open. That's the way the condition reflected it.
Okay. No, that sounds right. I remember we were concerned about the, the noise impacting the school, so. As well as some neighbors. So, board members, any other questions, concerns, comments? Yeah, this seems de minimis to me, having Chip out there, having looked at it all. I feel like we're in a good spot. Brian, if you can just stay in touch with me on the follow-ups. You know, I can do the lighting and the sound check and all that stuff.
Yep, I will.
So, to that end, Mr. Chairman, I move that, as presented this evening, on the landscape plan dated 6/12, that the, in respect to the trees and the wall area around the standing sign are de minimis.
I'll second that.
And are minor modifications.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing non-regular voting members, Chip.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Dave.
Yes.
Mickey.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Did I miss somebody?
No.
No, I don't think so. Okay.
And, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair and board members. I'll, I'll appear a draft letter, and it would be quest that part of that letter, Mr. Chair, will be that you acknowledge to the building inspector that your conditions are satisfied for CEO purposes.
Yeah, that's fine. He could just stop sharing too.
Yep, sorry about that.
No problem. Okay, that's all set. Moving on, 963. Yep, thank you. 963 Main Street Tap Room and Kitchen, hashtag Boss Mama. Jen, I believe this is you.
It is. I'm gonna share right now. Do you have that?
It's starting to.
All right.
Yep, we have it now.
So, thank you for having us back with the changes from the previous sketching. What we did was make the correction to keep the lineal feet under 33, 20, under the 33 lineal feet, which is 20.83 lineal feet is where we are. We had to be under 22. So, I've revised it, and it's looking similar, but the sizes are correct now. And in addition, on the window signage, she eliminated her tagline, and she just has the address, the entrance, and the logo on the windows for this area. Right here.
Okay.
And that's only 2.27 square feet, total window graphics, which is under the 10%.
Okay. Board members, comments, questions?
I think this cleans it up exactly what we were looking for from last week.
Okay, good.
Yep, I think everything's under the individual signs, collective sign, square foot area, in addition to the width of the signs on the building, right? I think the max.
Correct.
Be more under that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it cleans it up. I don't, I don't think we have to worry about the addresses on the, on the door, but certainly the logo would be considered a sign.
Address is allowed, entrance is allowed.
Right. So, really, it's just the Boss Mama logo that's.
Or 10%, which is certainly under that.
Yeah, so I, I think we're good here. And I think he sent another drawing that had a close-up with the specs on the, the signs, and it, it labeled things the way I think we, we needed him to be. So, I'm good here too, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Hearing none.
We have, we, I moved that we approved the signage as presented to us tonight for Boss Mama located at 963 Main Street Wakefield. By, as presented to us by signage. Yep.
Jennifer.
Motion. Seconded.
Okay, motion's been made. Seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing seen none, Chip.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Dave.
Yes.
Mickey.
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Thank you for coming back, Jen. Thank you for your patience. Good luck with the signs.
Very much. Can I ask one more question? I, I'll make it really short.
Yep.
Regarding the, the pylon sign out in the parking lot, I know that she's not gonna be able to utilize that. Are you trying to eliminate all those type of signs or?
Yes.
In the area, or, I, I mean, I have someone else asking me about it. That's why I'm inquiring right now in a different location.
It's location by location. That's what's been here. That's what we decided when we did all the signage for this plaza.
Okay.
Again, answer it for another location.
All right, I'll approach that separately. Thank you very much, everybody. I truly appreciate it.
If you could stop sharing, that'd be appreciated.
Have a good day. Thanks.
Okay, moving on to continued hearings. First up is the residents at Nahant LLC located at 119 Nahant Street. We've received, Jen, if you could stop sharing, please.
Oh.
We've received correspondence from their attorney, Jeffrey Panos.
Sorry about that.
They've asked for a continuance. It's a long letter, but I'll, I'll read some highlights of it. Dear Board, seeking a continuous, by the way, of updates since our last meeting. Test pits were conducted and observed by the town engineer on May 23rd. The engineering group is continuing to develop its submission to the board that will complete, will, will include storm auto management plan, revised internal parking and traffic circulation, building footprint, and other site features by Scott Cameron. The designers continue to work with the civil set, so they'll coordinate the design with the civil set. Also, we've known for Friday, this group was supposed to be before the town's traffic advisory committee. They're seeking a continuance from that meeting on Friday morning to, to the July meeting of the TAC. So, they're not ready for, with traffic either, so that's just gonna delay our, our discussion of traffic on this proposal as well. They have offered, you know, to extend in the time commensurate with our hearing, but it's really, I've gotta write the attorney back. It should be commensurate with when the extension should be commensurate with the next TAC meeting, not our hearing, because they're asking for the continuance at the traffic advisory committee. That's not a town matter. I will write Mr. Panos and, and make that point with him. So.
So, Tom, given that, do we vote to continue? Or do we vote to continue with a condition upon getting at a, a further extended timetable?
I think we just vote to continue, and then I'll take that up on the side.
Okay, all right, fine.
And with that, the applicant, you know, the, it moves the end of the matter till September 11th.
Still not enough time.
Still, we only have, we have our June meeting, one in July, one in August, and then we have one the night of September 11th. So, we do need more time, which is.
And, and when you write him, my opinion would be also, Tom, and I don't know how others feel, but at this point, I'm not, I don't think we need to bend over backwards to have special meetings. Not, they've, they've done nothing to, and for us to take another night during our summer, because they've done nothing to move this forward on their end. I don't think we should bend over backwards to satisfy their schedule.
No, I think.
So, my humble opinion, but.
I, I share that opinion. I don't wanna do the traffic discussion. There's a lot of neighbors concerned about traffic. I don't wanna do it over the summer, because people do wanna go away. And people do wanna do different things, and they're on a different schedule in the summer. I'd like to delay the traffic discussion if at all possible till after Labor Day.
I mean, we should have done the traffic months ago, but it's their delays and their, their craziness. So, I, I have, this, this is just getting to be absolutely ridic. I've never, in 23 years of sitting on this board, have I ever seen anything like this before.
No.
Just leave it at that for tonight.
In terms of process, any other questions or comments from the board? We'll try to keep it to process. We'll talk about the application. Hearing seen none. Looking for a motion to continue our, our here, our next hearing, which is Wednesday, June 26th.
We're going to July, right?
They're asking for the continuance to, to.
I thought after the TAC meeting.
I'd like, you know, the TAC means like after the July, but I, I have a few words from Mr. Panos I'd like to share with him about our concern, so I.
Okay, so which June?
June 26th.
I move that we continue this to June 26th.
Seconded.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, regular voting members, Chip.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Dave.
Sorry, Tom, I was on mute. Didn't they ask for a continuance or the extension till 9/11? Are we not entertaining that?
Yeah, yeah.
That's the continuance.
I'm not gonna entertain that till after you, Tom, have your conversation, right?
Well, why don't you, I think we should take the September 11th and then have a conversation.
So, let me amend my motion, which is to continue this to our June 26th meeting and accept the offer to extend till 9/11.
I thought we, I thought we already extended it to 9/11, didn't they?
No, that, that's the other one.
Okay.
That's 32. We're gonna hear from them next.
Okay, I'll second the amended motion.
Okay, motion been made, seconded. Regular voting members, Chip.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Dave.
Yes.
Mickey.
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Okay, matters continue to June 26th. And extended, the public hearing, 100-day days is extended to September 11th. All right, next up is case 242032 Nahant Street LLC. I do not see Mr. Haverty.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me?
Okay, it's, Mr. Silverstein, are you stepping in for Mr. Haverty?
I am for this evening.
Okay.
For the record, Jonah, oh, I'm sorry.
We'd like to see who we're talking to.
Oh, is my video on? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I pressed it.
No problem.
Am I there?
Yep, you're here now.
Yeah, all right. My apologies. For the record, Jonathan Silverstein, for the applicant, as I indicated, I'm stepping in for my partner, Paul Haverty, this evening. With me, I believe, are Andrew Jones and Peterson Dorsey of Phoenix Architects and Scott Green, the applicant. I believe that Chris Perigis submitted revised plans last week that addressed some TAC comments mainly relating to signage and landscaping. Unfortunately, no one from that office was available this evening. Mr. Perigis was unavailable, and the person who normally would fill in for him had a, a family medical emergency, I believe, that prevented him from attending. So, we don't have anyone from that office. We do have, as I indicated, both Andrew Jones and Peterson Dorsey from the architecture firm. And my understanding from Scott Thornton, who is the traffic engineer on the project, is that this matter is going before TAC on Friday. So, that's the quick update, and I'm happy to bring the revised plans up if, if you would like, otherwise.
No, a couple, a couple of things on process before we start. I'd like to hear from the board, you know, this, this project's ready to go to TAC on Friday. We had always planned on having a public meeting or one of our hearings dedicated to traffic with both projects in, in one night, because they're so related. They have the same traffic engineer. Mr. Silverstein, are you aware of the deadline of 180 days?
I am.
What's your, what's your understanding of that?
You mean of the current extended period?
Yes.
Oh. I, my memory, and it's consistent with what I, I think I heard earlier, is that the current deadline is 9/11, but.
Yeah.
I can confirm that with Mr. Haverty, or perhaps Mr. Green can confirm.
That's my memory as well. So, board members, we have a hearing the night of September 11th on our schedule. I'd like, I have an open mind on this to listen to other board members, but I would like to cover traffic for both projects in the same meeting, so we can have TAC here, members, our team from the Town of Wakefield here, to talk with their traffic engineer for both projects. That's always been our goal. Now, because of the delay with the other projects, we're in a little bit of a different, we're in a, TAC might be closer to be done with this project first. I'll obviously be at the meeting on Friday, and I can report it out, but I'd just like to hear what other board members have to say about that.
Well, it's, I'm sorry, um, sorry, Tom. It sounded like, even with the, the other Nahant Street project, sounded like they're gonna go to TAC, and then they're gonna fix something, then they're gonna go back to TAC. I don't wanna change that. Hopefully, that doesn't happen, but they sound like they're much further out. I mean, we've talked all along, and I'm sure the residents wanna know the cumulative impact of the traffic. But I think these guys are more ready, and I think the other Nahant Streets at least a TAC meeting, if not two, away. So, I'd like to hear them together, but it sounds like we gotta do these guys first. That's just my opinion.
Okay, anybody else?
I, I think I'm in that same vein. However, I don't believe that that means that we can't ask all our town representatives to come to a public meeting and certainly discuss where they're at with the other project. I think it's unfair or unrealistic to ask these guys, if they're ready to move forward, to have them wait because the others aren't. But I do think we can still ask our fire chief, our police chief, our, you know, Lieutenant Anderson and our consultants, you know, to come to a meeting to discuss traffic on this particular project. And that will still allow us to ask about the other and have it combined, would be my opinion.
Anybody else?
Agree. I think we have to keep this one moving forward and not wait for the other one.
Okay, I will bring this up Friday morning at TAC as well. Okay, I think it's a key question for us, so. All right, with that, Mr. Silverstein, I think you have your folks from here. We know there were some changes that were submitted on Friday. Why don't we go over that?
Sounds good. Thank you, Jonathan. It's Andrew Jones, representing Phoenix Architects, and good evening, Mr. Chair and board members. I can begin to share my screen. Can you guys see it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so I will start with a note about a reduction of unit count. We went from 26 units to 24 units. You'll see the change happening in this wing right here. We dropped a story. Also, there's been some adjustments in the bedroom count. Originally, it was 22 one-bedrooms, one-two-bedroom, and three-three-bedrooms, total in 26 units. We heard a little bit of concern about, you know, how there's a lot of one-bedrooms and not many variable other units. So, with this reduction, we were able to get two more two-bedrooms. So, now we're at 18 one-bedroom units, three two-bedroom units, and three three-bedroom units. I'm gonna go to the next page, which is a streetscape showing the previous iteration at the full height on this left-hand wing, and then showing the massing drop on this left-hand side down here. Floor plan-wise, some of the units, as I said, changed. One big adjustment we also began to make is add in Juliet balconies to some of these units. You'll see unit 203, unit 205, and unit 207 on the second floor got balconies. On the third floor, unit 301 has a small walkout balcony. Unit 302 has the same. And then, unit 303 and 305 have Juliet balconies. And we thought this is really good, uh, strategical location for them, as this is looking out to the wetlands in the back and also to the left-hand side that acts as a buffer with the parking. So, it's not too close to any of the residents. Right-hand side remains. As we know, that's a little bit tighter on the site to side setback. One other adjustment was adding a few windows on the first floor, I think you had mentioned. Again, some windows and some light, and from the backhand side, which we were able to achieve, one in the hallway, one more in the bedroom. That's just showing a new roof plan. As far as elevations go, you'll see the massing drop on the left-hand side. And then for the left-hand elevation, you're seeing it as well right here. And then as you come around the back, you see the lower massing wraparound. You start to see all the Juliet balconies carved into the manzard roof. Besides that, we are able to follow what the outdoor lighting would be. The sconces were showing. So, John Timberline East Crest 15-inch. There's a total of three at the front, eight at the left-hand side, mostly over each of the parking, eight at the rear, once again, mostly at the, in front of the parking, covered parking, and then one on the right-hand side. So, a total of 20. And then as you guys had asked for a more updated materials list, so now we're starting to show what each product looks like, what would be material list for the building. So, this is the sconce we're showing, the brick, Matthew's Brothers Sanford Hills window, yada, yada. I believe from Chris's site plan, I believe from Chris's site plan, um. That he sent in, I never got to see it, but we worked with John and Chris over at Williams and Sprudges. On a massing study. Of all the surrounding homes. Maybe, John, you could pull that up and share it. If you have it. But besides that, I'm more than happy to answer any questions relating to the architectural.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we pause here and take questions and comments from the board before we had asked for that context study? So we can move on to that afterward, but why don't we take questions, comments from board members here?
Andrew, did you look at the entrance location to the back to the handicap space? I don't see that dog location has changed.
Oh, yes, that, that needs to be shifted. Uh, we did not do that, but I will make sure to hit that.
Okay, and then thank you, thank you for adding more two-bedroom unit.
Yep, absolutely, no problem.
Thank you, cause somebody else?
Yeah, what does the, um. Change in unit count do to your parking, if anything?
You know, that's.
Parking analysis.
It's a great question. I never got to see the site plan. Chris had submitted it individually. And had never shared it last Friday. I know he was working on it right up to the last minute. But with this reduction should allow for. Three available spaces, um, if we wanted to, but. Like I said, I'm not, I, I can't really answer until. I see the site plan.
And, and what was, I know we've been pushing. To eliminate the whole left side. Um, what was your thought and reasoning only to do two units?
I think that's where the developer wants to. Cap it, um. Maybe Scott can. Chime in if you'd like, but, um, losing, losing that left-hand side. One way or another, which would be two more units. I don't, parking would stay. Still, we still need this row parking, so the building itself physically wouldn't be able to shift unless we lost some parking. But. Yeah.
Right, I mean, I think we were thinking for amenity space, green space. I mean, if you look at the site plan, it, it's, which we won't do tonight, cause it's not fair to do it. Without Chris here or somebody from his firm. I'd like, yeah, we'll, we'll leave it, cause that's a whole nother discussion.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I mean, I, I was hoping to see like Chip was mentioning that whole left side just cut off, but. Apparently you, you should naggle it to. Take two units off and keep that, and I understand what you're saying with the, with the parking. Um, I didn't really think about that, I guess, that much. I thought we were losing four units, which would give you. Six spots, and I think those are what's at one, two, three, that's seven spots, so. I know, I hate to lose pocket too, but. Um, it would be almost a wash if you lost the. The four units, but I do appreciate you going down the two, we're. Getting there.
Yeah, thank you.
I will say, Mister Chair, that, um, you know, we are. Obviously, in any negotiation. Neither side is generally gonna get everything it wanted. We started off at thirty-two. We're down significantly from there, um. There are a lot of expenses. I don't have to tell you about. Construction loan rates, construction costs, um, the cost of permitting and, and the rest, so. We do feel like we're moving in good faith and really trying to meet the board. Um, midway, um, and, and, um. Showing good faith movement on that. And at the same time. There are real consequences to. Every unit that gets lost. Now, I'll let Scott speak further to that, but. Um, we are, we are trying to work with the board in good faith and I, I, I hope that, uh, you do see that.
I, I do, sorry Mick, but, uh, you know, I'm never really gonna make a decision based on the developer's performer. I gotta tell you that. That doesn't move me at all, um. How much money they're making, I, I really don't care. Um, we're, we're, we're gonna try to negotiate with you. We do appreciate the adjustments that have been made. But I don't see where en masse general law or Wakefield zoning ordinance or under forty B where your performer comes into. Um, comes into play here, so I, I kinda don't. I really don't wanna hear it. I'll, I'll just leave it at that. I really don't wanna hear it. Cause you're talking to neighbors and having serious. Impact on the value of their property, on their quality of life, and to hear you talking about your. The developers profit here. I'm not interested, so, uh, sorry, Mickey, I did cut you off.
No, that, yeah, that, that was very well said. Can I, um, do you have something there that shows kind of the whole plot? What sort of outside outdoor space, I mean.
We don't have anybody from civil here.
I'm not sure, John, do you have, do you happen to have the site plan that was submitted?
I do. Do you want me to bring it up? I'm not gonna be the best person to speak to.
It's up to the board members, yeah, I mean, I, I can.
I'm just trying to look for open space of any kind.
Mister Chair, would you like me to bring up the site plan just to, to see it?
I'd really, I'm with Chip, I'll, I'll take a poll of the board, but I'm really with Chip. I'd like to see. It done with the, the engineer here, but.
I agree, I guess. I mean, we got it sent to us. I mean, you can look at it, but we can't ask questions, cause there's nobody here to answer them.
No, agreed. I'm, I'm just looking for some sort of amenity space slash livability once this thing gets built.
There isn't any.
There isn't, nothing.
Start with that.
So, so who would wanna live? Who would develop something where the people that are there can't live there? You know, i- i- if this, i- if this was put into a parcel in downtown Boston, it's understandable. Um, but not here, and it's, you know, it's, it's a shame and, and, uh. Um, and it doesn't make you think you should have more units. It makes you think you should have significantly less units. Um, and that's all I'm gonna say. You need more stuff. You can't just put people in a box. That's it.
Okay. Anybody else? Hearing none at that point, at this point, then, um. If you have nothing else to show, Mister Silverstein, I know you're in a, a, an odd spot that you don't have your engineer and your film in for the other attorney, so. Um, I don't know what else we're gonna do tonight, uh, other than open it up to the public here unless you had something else you wanted to say.
I, I guess the only thing, Mister Chair, I would point out, and again, I, I'm not looking at all to debate. We're gonna continue, we, we wanna continue to work with the board. The only thing I will say is. The legal standard that gets applied is actually whether or not. Requirements of the board render the project on economic as defined by the statute. So that actually is explicitly written into the statute and the regulations. That being said. I'll, I'll leave that issue alone, but I, I did wanna make that point, um. And other than that, I'll, um. Answer any questions or defer to public comment.
Yeah, and as I said, I, I really don't think the neighbors wanna hear it, so, um, we'll leave it there. Um, at this point, I'm gonna open it up to public comment. I see Karen McMaster has her hand raised. Karen, if you could unmute yourself.
Um, uh, Mister Lucy, I wanna thank you for saying what you said because what. Um, that gentleman just said is very insulting. If it wasn't for the forty B statute, we wouldn't even be having this discussion right now. Um. You, you probably would have had to put townhouses there or a home. We wouldn't even be looking at complexes. Common sense. There's nothing like that on this whole street. Um, you would think that. You wouldn't even be able to develop that there. We're just asking for something smaller. I know you have costs, we all have costs, but we've lived here, we're invested here. And I really don't care what your bottom line is. Again, I'm very insulted by that. We wanna work with the developer. If you knock down that other side leg and listen to the Z B A, maybe we'd be on board with it a little bit more. Um, but there's, there's no compassion there at all. That's horrible. You look at all the people here. That have been in this community and been here, and we're taking our time to be here. I'm not. Spilling this into you, but the other project, how many times have. You people and your development to, to team delayed us, and we're here. We have lives too, and we're not paid. And neither is the Z B A. I really hope that you really start thinking about, you know, and we keep hearing. Thank you, Mister Lucy. Thank you, Z B A. You never say hello neighbors and welcome and, and everything else. We're the ones that are here. And we're the ones that are gonna be impacted by this. Our property values are not gonna ever go up. They're gonna go down and stay the same. So I just wanna say that and maybe really think about it if it was your neighborhood. And you were living here, how would you feel? So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Karen. Appreciate your persistence in attending all the meetings. Uh, any other member of the public? If you could use the raised hand function in Zoom if you wish to speak. I see a Victoria T. You could unmute yourself and give me your name and address.
Yep, Victoria Turner sixteen Wilson Road. Uh, I really just wanna reiterate everything Karen just said because. This project is too big. It doesn't fit the neighborhood. It doesn't fit the street. I know this is not about traffic tonight, but. That street cannot handle more traffic. And, excuse me. A lot of people moved to Wakefield for the schools, for the community. And I would love to see something like townhouses being considered for this lot. If you look at the townhouses that were put in on Bennett Street. I believe it is. Those are lovely. They're a great addition to the community and. A giant apartment complex, giant for the lot. It's just, it doesn't match. It doesn't fit. We do not have the space for that. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your comments. Appreciate you attending the meeting. Anybody else? Uh, Paula Gardella. Paul, if you could, uh, unmute yourself and, uh, you've testified before, but if you could just give me your address again, please.
Yes, I'm at ten Wilson Road. Again, I'm just trying to be a voice of reason here. Again, the project is too big. This, we've all said it, we're gonna continue to say it. The, the, the motion to make it two units less, that's absolutely wonderful, thank you. But again, let's, again, we have to look at the whole impact of the whole project. Cut it a little more. We're not asking for much. Just cut it a little more. Get it more reasonable so that we feel like we're still a neighborhood. That's it.
Great, thank you so much. Anybody else?
I'm not sure how to raise my hand, Tom.
Okay, Cheryl, I see you. If you, uh, could give me your, uh, name and address.
Yes, it's, um, two seventy-three Naham Street, and I live down on, by the Farm Street end.
Go ahead.
There was a new lane of traffic opened up on Naham Street this morning. Going from, um, Franklin School down to Main Street. A motorcycle was riding on the sidewalk to beat the traffic. So people say we don't have traffic problems. The new lane, motorcycles, never mind bicycles or kids walking to school. Somebody caught it on a ring camera on their door. So we're gonna have more problems with traffic.
Now, I agree. I went over there today to take another look and, uh, I was there in mid-afternoon and the, uh. The backup from North Ave, uh, in Main Street. Uh, was, uh, was significant, so. But here we can see what you're talking about. Okay, anybody else?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, this is Allison Jana. I also have a comment. I'm not sure about raising my hand.
Yeah, just, Allison, what's your address, please? Go ahead.
I'm just wondering, I mean, again, somebody just brought up the schools. I know we go back and forth on this stuff, but when do we talk about the schools? When do we talk about the kids that are gonna be living there and going to the Woodville School or going to the Galvin School or going to the high school? Especially the Woodville School. Where are these kids going to fit? How does our school and our taxes and, and everything involved with going to school? How, how do we get there? Ho- how? I mean, and then the fire, the, the, you said today, the motorcycle going straight down the Han Street. It, it actually happened. I've mentioned it before. My son himself got hit by a car on the Han Street. Back several years ago, and these things are just being glossed over. You take half a, a roof off of, of a house. And you say, okay, let's try this. Wha- what about townhouses? Who, who, who's making money from, like, i- i- it just goes on and on and on. And we sit here, beautiful summer night, night after night after night after night. And I mean, what can we actually do instead of just sitting here and going over the same things over and over and over again? It's so frustrating. Wha- what do we do in addition to this? I mean, I've talked before, do people get together? Can you pitch in for lawyers? Can, like, what can actually be done that's actually going to make a difference, that can actually make a change? Is there, is there anything?
Yeah, well, we have to look at the, the traffic and impact thing, so we, that's why we're following the traffic. Very closely. That's why we're having our town professionals. On the Traffic Advisory Committee, take a good hard look at their traffic study.
So, and I know you were here today, you said, Tom, but again, like, our traffic study, there's no way that that study cannot happen. Unless it does, happens Friday, a study cannot happen until after Labor Day. In July, when kids are, you know, people are sleeping in, kids aren't going to the high school, kids, i- i- it has to. Be after Labor Day, when people are on vacation, wh- when the street is just dead in July, that's not gonna do anybody any good.
So Allison, one of the things that. Happens is the town has a traffic engineer. Uh, uh, that serves on the Traffic Advisory Committee, paid for by the town. So they, they work with the traffic engineers for the developer. So they, they decide when the counts are done. The counts aren't gonna be done over the summer. The counts were done. On a more, uh, regular working day. And so that's worked out between the Traffic Advisory Committee and the Development Team. So the traffic counts are done. Now it's about the analysis. And, and having those folks get together and, and, and talk about, you know, what needs to be done to make it safe, so. I know it's a lot, um. You know, I'd rather be doing something else tonight myself, but here I am as a volunteer. So I, I just gotta tell you to hang in, go to the Traffic Advisory Committee on Friday morning. Um, and I know it's a lot of time, but it's. With these forty Bs, we don't have as much leverage as we do with other projects. That's just the nature of. Th- these applications.
Uh, and, and I mean, I know everybody agrees, but Naham Street is an actual, like, artery of the whole town. If. Naham Street backs up, it's gonna back up into Farm, it's gonna back up into North Ave, Main Street. I mean, I mean. The implications of more traffic and more cars and people coming in, twenty-six people coming out of there and a. However, many people it is coming out of their places on any given day, bus, you know. School bus stops. It, it's just going to be endless, and I think everybody agrees is, it's, I, I just wish we had more of a say, like, it could go to a town vote or. Because I don't think that other people out of our neighborhood realize the implications. I really don't, and I. I would really encourage people to talk to your friends and talk to your neighbors and. Just what is gonna happen when your kids are trying to go to high school next, you know, when your kids are trying to get to. Anywhere, the Galvin School, anywhere in the morning, get to work. I- it's, it's just a main thoroughfare Naham Street, and everyone bats around up and down side streets. But again, i- it, it. I- it, there's gonna be no way to get around. There's gonna be traffic jams on Traverse Street. There's gonna be traffic jams, you know, going up. Birch, Birch Hill, Birch Street there. I- I, I mean, it just.
No, I, I, I hear you, Allison, and that's why I'm asking you to hang in. Go to the Traffic Advisory Committee meeting on Friday morning. You know, hang in with. That and, and have your voice heard there. The police are on there, our traffic, the towns traffic engineers on there, the fire chiefs on there. Uh, D P W's on there. These are people that know our roadways and know safety, so. They'll, they'll be weighing in and I encourage you to. To, to give them your concerns as well. If you can't make it Friday morning, I strongly encourage you to at least send an email to them.
Yeah, definitely. If I can, my, my husband will definitely be there.
And we're gonna have a meeting, Mister Chair, as you said, we're gonna have a meeting on this. Topic when we can get them all at this forum, so there'll be a forum to. Hash all this out. It's just not tonight, cause we don't have all the.
So, yeah, Allison, that's why you heard me talk with the board about when would we have that meeting and. At the beginning of the presentation tonight, so we know it's important. We know it's, it's weighing heavily on people's minds. So thank you for coming tonight. I know, yeah. I'm sure you'd rather be watching the Celtics or something, but there you are, so, um.
Thanks, Tom.
Yep. So, M- Marie, I know you've been here before, but if you can give me your address again, please.
Off mute.
You're on mute, uh, Marie.
How's that? Um, uh, Maria Olivera, two sixteen Nahand Street, and um, I'm between Valley. And Mount Pleasant. So um, and I'm going on Friday morning because um, things like. Um, spring and fall, uh, when people come up and down to the dump. A lot of traffic there. Um, during snowstorms, you have. DPW trucks going to the dump up and down with sand. So there's more to consider than just a routine traffic study, so. Um, so I uh, plan to go um, Friday and bring up a lot of this.
Yeah, that would be good. And then as uh, Mr. Hatfield said, there's gonna be a forum here as well, so. Uh, you'll have your opportunity then as well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Going once, going twice. Back to the board.
So, Tom, I move that we continue this to. Our June twenty-sixth meeting. And hopefully you'll come back and tell us maybe that we can talk about traffic at that point, given what you might find out Friday morning. And I guess if it's not traffic at that point, then there's not a whole lot, or we could go back to civil and get the whole engineer.
Yeah, no, no, Mickey had some questions and I agree with them, so I, I would like to cover that and uh. So at the very least, I'd like to bring them back on the twenty-sixth, and hopefully one of their engineers can make it. We can look at the parking. We can look at the site, we can.
Yeah.
And then we can report on what, what happened to TAC and how we might move forward with that. Mr. Silverstein? Yeah, I'm sorry, Dave.
There's a motion, Mr. Chair, if somebody wanted to second it, I'll second it.
It wasn't, yeah, but uh, I just wanted to before, I want to pull a little hold on that. Are you clear with what, with, what our goals are for the twenty-sixth?
Uh, I believe so. You want to make sure that someone from civil can be there, which. Um, I think tonight was unusual and first time no one could be, and I'm certainly. Uh, will make clear that that's the board's desire, uh, and I don't anticipate a problem with that. And then I think the other piece is uh, having a discussion about traffic coming out of TAC, which is.
Yeah.
Um, in a couple days, so that makes
In addition to the civil, though, we also asked for a context study. I want to make sure that that's here, and we have it, and that we'll, we'll bring that up as well.
Okay.
And then as part of the, the site civil and stuff, you know, Mr. Feely has some very direct questions about site amenities. Uh, for residents on the site as well. All right, sorry about that, Chip.
No, no problem. With that said, I, I remake my motion to continue this to our June twenty-sixth meeting.
Second.
Hey, motion's been made and seconded. Uh, any further discussion? Yeah, seeing unregulable membership.
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
I vote yes. Matters continue to June twenty-sixth. Thank you for your presentation tonight.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, we've gone through other matters. Onto clerk board comments.
Oh, I, this scares me because I tend to, I'm about to sound very much like somebody that's retired from the board. Um, so last Thursday, uh, last Thursday, I went to the Building Department. Reviewed the plans for North Ave, and they seemed to match. There were a couple. Little things that needed to be cleaned up, some printing issues and um. A couple landscape issues, but basically they were all set to get their permit. Um, Gail, help me, what else did I look at?
Foundry Street, mock-up panel.
Uh, no, one ninety-eight, oh yeah, your mock-up panels, but one ninety-eight Albion Street.
Yep, one night, the plans for one ninety-eight Albion Street, they were fine. Uh, again, a couple little things, but, but minor, minor cleanup items. I then looked at Foundry Street and the mock-up panel. And uh, it was great. And when that building gets done, it's gonna be really sharp there, there uh. Their materials are, are better in person than they are. Uh. Uh, and that's a DBA C project, but Maggiore's building it for them. So Maggiore is who built six hundred North Ave with Tonno in it, and that. Project and Maggiario and DBA C have done a couple other projects. Um, together, so thi- this is moving along and moving along well. Uh, they're hoping to be done, you know, early spring. Uh. Then you already know that I went to Noria. Um. Think that's it.
Yeah, sorry that all fell on you, Chip. We'll uh, we'll, we'll break those up a little bit better next time.
That's okay. Uh, you know, Joe might be able to look at plans too, as long as he's not involved in the project, so. It would be a little tough to have him look at North Ave, uh, considering he's gonna be building it, so.
I look at it every day.
Yeah, you look at it every day and see what I missed. Um, no, so I, all good. Uh, not a problem, just tough for me to get there when, you know. With Gail, uh, as she works a full day and I work a full day, uh, you know, we're not asking her to stay till six or seven o'clock. When I roll back into town. Uh, but no, easy, easy enough to do. And Gail's always great to have everything ready. And makes it easy, like, here's what you're looking at, here's what, what I've got in the file, and it's always great, very easy.
Chip, you should have asked me to go to the um, gas station. I could have walked there from my house. So north, north, real quick, North Ave, we're gonna start doing that mock-up panel in the next couple weeks. Um, foundation's gonna be done next week, so that's gonna. Move along. Um, and the only other thing I had on my list was. The Bylaw Review Committee that's coming up in a few weeks. I don't know, it's gonna be hybrid, so I, I'm gonna be there. But if any of you guys want to join on that there.
That's the twenty-seventh, right?
Right, it's the night after our meeting. I think I have something for work, but Joe, I did reach out to Dan. I talked to him, I said, members of this board are very interested in participating. We appreciate all the work that you've done for the board. Uh, on that committee, he understands that we've been tied up with these forty Bs too and been pretty busy, so he, he. Wants to connect in early July, so hopefully we can find some time either as individuals or uh. To maybe have Dan. We can thi- think about how we want to interact as a board. Individually, obviously, you can do whatever you want. But we might want to think about as a board if we want to have some combined comments for that, um. For the Bylaw Review.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to go on the twenty-seventh, so.
If I can, we might, yeah, send some of my own comments that, not for the board, just for me as the citizen, so. All right, um. Anything else?
Just, Mr. Chair, maybe a question through you for Gail. I'm just curious. Like on uh, projects we've approved, just wondering where maybe they stand. Like, good to get updates on some of these others, but like, the police one?
Demo permit for inside to do selective demo inside.
They have a demo permit?
In that, yep, they have that.
Okay.
What street?
Chestnut Street, the Main Street, Chestnut, the bank.
Oh, yeah, no, those plans haven't come in either.
Okay, El Broadway?
Nope.
Well, M- Mr. McGrail represented all three of those. He'll be back on the twenty-sixth, so I think. Uh, I can send him a note and just ask for an update, so he's prepared to talk about that for you, Dave.
Did we also ask for Captain Captain Forbes to come in? We'd said they were gonna come in every six months or so, Tom. Did we?
Yeah, when did they last come in, Dave? Did they come in, they came in under you, right? No, yes?
It's, they're probably due for an update.
Mr. McGrail for that yet or not.
Okay. Well, if you're gonna go over Tuesday morning, you can see them live.
I will not be there, unfortunately. I will drive by it every night. Uh, that being said, Mr. Chair, I move that we uh, approve the minutes.
Expertly prepared by Gil, yes.
As always, that needs to be unsaid. Um, but uh, if you helped me with the date, I could continue with the motion.
May twenty-second.
May twenty-second, thank you.
Seconded.
Okay, we can voice vote this one, although in favor.
Uh, yeah. The next thing will be go Celtics. See you later, guys.
We're gonna have, we'll be longer on the twenty-sixth, so get ready for that one.
Bring your coffee, yep.
All right, thanks, folks.